... board meeting. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand and join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Remain standing for me. I'd like to call up Cliff Sparks, who's with the Bastrop Christian Outreach Center. He's gonna offer prayer tonight.
Let us pray. Lord God, thank you for letting us all be together in this place at this time. We invite your presence to be here with us, and I ask that you manifest your joy to everyone here. Let a knowledge of your love be in every family of this district, of the families of students, family of staff. Let everything be completed that needs to be completed at this closing, nearly closing, of the school year. Let every honor be given, let every recognition be given. Let people not be worried, but just manifest the works of their hands, help them to get things done that need to be done, so that there's nothing missing, nothing left undone, and nothing broken. Let this place be full of your joy and your peace and recognition of your righteousness in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Sparks. Our April meeting's pretty crowded, so is our May meetings, a lot of recognition, a lot of student recognition, so we're glad everybody's here. I'd like to go ahead and call up Marissa Chrissain to the front. She's gonna be our student speaker today. Before she gets started, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Marissa. The character trait she's gonna speak about is self-discipline. Marissa's a member of Campus Green Team, which assists in a school-wide recycling program. She's an advanced pianist, who spends her free time composing music. Marissa loves to draw and enjoys being outdoors. Her parents are Bill and Alexis Chrissain, and through here, we'd like you to be recognized. Alright, Marissa.
This is the meaning of self-discipline, the ability to control one's feeling and overcome one's weakness, the ability to pursue what one thinks is right despite temptations to abandon it. Hello, I am Marissa Chrissain. I would like to take a minute to tell you why self-discipline is the most important character trait in me. Being self-disciplined is two bridges between goals and accomplishments. It's not about making my parents proud, my teachers proud, but making myself proud. My self-discipline comes from my honor. It's always great to be an honorable person, and in doing that, my self-discipline is always the key factor. I love school, I love learning and growing, so my schoolwork and being the best at it is what's most important to me. It comes before playing, watching TV, or anything else. Also, I'm a very dedicated pianist. Playing any instrument is challenging, I must work at it very hard. I am disciplined in knowing this is one of my top priorities. I do not want to fail because that is not an option for me. I want all my dreams and hopes to come true, and for that to happen, I have the determination to do so. I have the willpower to stick to my goals and be the most successful person I can be. With my self-discipline, I will achieve becoming anything I want to be. One day, I will become a doctor, and I will make a change and leave my mark on the world. And one more thing, what lies in our power to do, it lies in our power not to do, said by Aristotle.
Thank you, Marissa, that was great. There's probably a lot of high schoolers that wouldn't do that.
Oh, I know the next two I'm gonna introduce would do that, 'cause they get to speak all the time. Uh, this is the time where I have the honor of introducing the two representatives from our student advisory councils that I meet with once a month, both Bastrop High School and Cedar Creek High School. Tonight with us, we have two juniors, from Cedar Creek High School, Kiana McCarver, and from Bastrop High School, Cassandra or Cassie Queiros. Girls, wave please. Cassie, I know we talk about this a lot when we're at the meetings, but, uh, you know, how long you been on the council?
I've been on the council for one year.
This is your first year, and you're a junior, but, you know, quickly, senior year is approaching next year, what do you plan on doing following graduation?
I'd like to attend Sam Houston University and study forensic science.
Very good. Kiana, how about you?
Um, well, this is my first year also, and after high school, I would like to also attend some things, and major in pre-law.
Pre-law, outstanding. These two young ladies are just a representation of the twenty students at each high school that I get, I have the blessing of meeting with each month. But these two, these two young ladies really shine, and I wanna appreciate them for being here. I told them, we might ask them some more questions, it depends on how quickly we get through the agenda, but either way, they're gonna learn about governance and some of the things that are going on, uh, in our school district. So ladies, thanks for being here, we appreciate it. Uh, if I can go on? Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Tonight, we also have some special recognition for, uh, for two gentlemen. One couldn't be here tonight, but we wanna make sure we recognize him as well, and one is here, and we're gonna give him due recognition. These are what I've called, in the thirty-three years I've been in the business, in fifteen years I've been a superintendent, I call our ultimate volunteers, while they are elected officials, they are, uh, some of our most prominent servant leaders, and that's our school board members, our trustees. We have two board members going off after years of service to the district in that capacity. Mr. John Eaton, who couldn't be here this evening, but who has given six years of service to the children and the staff and the patrons of this district, so we wanna give him due recognition, Mr. Eaton. And with us tonight, after three years of service, is Mr. Mark Martin, and we wanna thank Mark for the service to our students, for our, to our district patrons, and to our staff, in making the decisions that he, that he and the board feel like were the best interest of our students and everybody involved. So Mark, thank you very much, we have a plaque for you, for your years of service. We're gonna move forward, Mr. Allen, if that's okay?
You bet.
Folks, we've talked about this every year, and I can't, um, this is one of the things that we like to talk about the most, as far as folks giving and giving of their time. Each year, there's a group of people, a larger collective group called the Bastrop Education Foundation, and there's a group off of the BEF, which is called the Sportsman's Committee, and they put together an event in January each year, that's just becoming a phenomenal event, and from that single event, they take all the proceeds, and they donate that back to BEF, and through BEF, student, I mean, teachers and principals and other folks in our district that work on our staff have a chance to apply for innovative teacher grants, or school grants. This year, like they have so many times, they stepped forward in a great fashion, and they donated a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from that one event. Uh, I think this year is the only year that outdid this year as far as a single year donation, was the year of the fires. And that was amazing in itself, of course, everything that's happened since then has been amazing, but, um, we wanna say thank you publicly to the BEF. Do we have our representatives here? From BEF, you come forward. Mr. Billy Moore. Billy, on behalf of the board trustees, and the administrative team, and all the staff members from Bastrop BISD, we just wanna say from the bottom of our heart, thank you for the tireless work and the service to all of our students and our staff from the BEF and from the Sportsman's Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The only thing I was gonna say was, this is just a small group of the, of the people that work together to make this a success. There are twenty-eight, eight people on the Bastrop Education Foundation Board, they're all volunteers, they spend a lot of hours reading, evaluating grants, and reading and evaluating the Rising Stars, the mentor program there, and working with the schools. And about once a year, there's about a hundred people on the board, because that's the rest of the committee of people that work on the Sportsman's Banquet fundraiser, which is our major fundraiser of the year, and it involves so many people in this community, and we would not have the success that we've had without our good relationship with BISD, and without the community support. The foundation exists purely because the people in this community care about education, and care about the youth of this community. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Once again, let's say thank you, um, to our folks from BEF for all their generosity. Uh, Dr. Thomas, can you come forward and help us with the next bit of recognition, please?
Well, good evening, everyone. Yes, okay. Good evening, Mr. Murray, Mr. Allen, members of the board. I wanna start off by, I wanna introduce our two theater directors. We are so proud of our theater students and our theater program this year, they've just been one of the highlight groups. We've had a lot of highlight groups, I wanna be careful that I give everybody equal recognition. But, um, the, the performance from the, from the kids in their, um, in the Grease, in the one-act play, uh, just really elevated our campus in so many ways. And I think that excitement that you start off the school with, with the football season, has just carried through with the academics, 'cause we always talk about the importance of not just playing hard on the field, we gotta play hard in the hallways, hard in the classroom, and demonstrate that we are strong in every aspect of what we do as a high school. And I think our, our theater students have really, again, elevated us and put us on the central Texas map. And Thursday night should be pretty exciting, so you need to keep an eye on that. So I wanna introduce Catherine Crafton and Mr. Guillermo De Leon, the leaders of this fantastic theater production, and I'm gonna turn it over to them, and they'll introduce you to the kids and let you know about what's been happening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sartor, we appreciate you. Okay, um, we're very happy to be here, this is, the musical's been around for about twenty years, and we've done a variety of great shows, and this year has been a really special one. Austin is doing the very first ever Greater Austin High School Musical Theater Awards, in which twenty-six schools, all the way from private schools and magnets to five A's, all the way down to, I think three A is the smallest category that they took this year. Um, and we were able to walk away with two nominations this year for the first time for the inaugural, we're very proud. The first nomination was the, um, which you can see the banner in the back, and, come on forward, guys. The first nomination was for Best Ensemble, which is basically celebrating the entire group and, and their, their abilities, and they were recognized as a strong group and whole. And the second category is for Best Featured Performer, and that went to one of our students named Kayla Castaneda, and she couldn't do it tonight because she's actually at rehearsal. She will be performing at the award ceremony in the opening number along with the other nominees. Uh, we have a second student that will be performing in the finale, her name is Rebecca Bond, and she'll be performing at the end of the night in the closing ceremony, um, in which various people from around the different schools will be performing as well. So we're real excited to be there. Uh, these are some of our students, um, you have Andrew and Michelle, who are holding up, if you wanna come forward, a picture representing the ensemble of the group, this is one of our pictures that we took by Mr. Henry Gideon, who gratefully, graciously took some pictures of the show. And you can see, uh, the, the whole group out there as a whole, um, looking very colorful and strong, and the show was a really pretty show. And again, I've got, over here, I've got Sarah Carter, Adrianne Clark, and I've got Bea Aganbrite and Lucas Thresher, and Logan Shepherdson, who is actually our, um, Danny, thank you, and of course, Ally Wickliff in the back also. And these are just some of the representatives from our show that we so gratefully had and are proud to work with. So, um, I, thank you for letting us have the shows, we appreciate you so much, thank you for your support, and we're looking forward to continuing this. This is, as I said, the inaugural contest, they'll be doing this from here on out. The goal is to be as big as a local contest in Houston called the Tommy Tune Awards, in which it's a huge deal, and every school over there participates. So, thank you for your time, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes. And we, uh, for the first time in about twelve years, um, we were able to walk away this year with a, with a district championship in UIO, and we went to ARIA and represented, and we got alternate to region at ARIA. Um, this is, um, the fifth year in a row we've been able to advance, and for the first time in twelve years, we won district championship, but for the first time in the last five years, we were able to walk away with not just a zone win, but a district win, and we're very, very proud. We had a district, and I'm glad she's here, Adrianne Clark, who was our best actor at district, uh, best actress at district, and amongst all other schools, she was the strongest actor at that contest, so we're very proud of her, although with several different awards. I think we'll be talking about them later on in May, so, thank you.
Thanks, Guillermo, I appreciate it, yeah. I was gonna mention something about that as well, and I'll, I'll agree, that's one of the strongest performances I've seen in all the years I've been going to one-act play. Outstanding, outstanding. Thank you, guys, we appreciate you.
Ms. Olivares? We'll get you to come forth, appreciate it.
Good evening, good evening, board members, Mr. Murray. I am really excited to introduce and recognize our CCHS Drumline. They did a phenomenal job, took the bronze at state competition this year, and I'm gonna have Mr. Mendez, they are under the direction of Chris Mendez, come up here and introduce the group to you. This is our CCHS Drumline, Mr. Mendez.
Good evening, board, and good evening, everyone in attendance. Um, I should start by saying this is the CCHS Indoor Drumline, but we do have three students from Bastrop High School participating with us, so this really is a joint district effort. Um, and it's been, they come over three times a week, um, you know, twenty-minute drive to make rehearsals, so I really appreciate that. Um, the, this is the second year of competition for the indoor drum line. Uh, the first year we did it, we finished fifth, um, so this is definitely a marked improvement. Um, the show this year was actually based on the original story of the Forty-seven Ronin, if anybody actually saw that movie that came out recently. It was really cool, the kids had a lot of fun. Uh, we actually only lost one contest all year, uh, and that was a third-place finish, and then we came in with a bronze medal at state. So I could not be happier for these kids. Um, it was a, I mean, a total just dig-in-and-get-it-done effort, and, um, I think they brought it home, so I really appreciate them, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez, yeah, I had the opportunity to come over, uh, in the morning and listen to the drum line, they did an outstanding job. Thank you very much. Ms. Kinsey, come on down.
Okay, I'd like to recognize the BMS Band, because they came back with Sweepstakes, which they got all ones, and they did an amazing job. Every year, Ms. Sin works herself up, but she always does an amazing job with the kids, so I guess that's part of it, so, uh, I'll let you talk about it.
Um, I just brought a small group, it's, there's only seven, we actually took, of course, forty-nine children, and we were very happy, this is consecutive Sweepstakes awards that we've received. We've, we've actually had seven, we've only had, I've been here eighteen years, and we've only had two years that we didn't come home with them. So I'm, I'm real proud of the kids, and they're really, it's a long tradition, I always tell them every year, you got some big boots to fill. And they, they've really stepped it up, and we have another competition on May seventeenth, it's called Sound Waves. We're taking both groups, probably about a hundred and thirty kids, and I'm excited to say, I think we're gonna come home, last year we got best in class in both categories, so we're looking forward to more competitions and festivals, and hopefully we'll be here next year too, it'd be great. Okay, but thank you for all your support.
Outstanding, congratulations.
And this is Allison Biddy.
I'm Aspen Park.
We have a bunch more, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Willoughby, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Gentlemen of the board, I'd like to introduce to you the Bastrop High School Boys Soccer Team, uh, finished fourth in District Forty-nine, four A, and qualified for the bi-district round of the playoffs. The Boys Bears Soccer Team had three first-team all-district players, Alejandro Leva, Cesar Sanchez, and Noah Gormley. Three second-team all-district recognitions, Clayton Sims, Wyatt Rosenhour, and Luis Carmona. All-district honorable mentions, David Vincennes, Austin Hutchinson, and David Carter. Most, uh, most notably, they had sixteen, sixteen academic all-district selections on this team for this year. Boys qualified for the bi-district round of the playoffs and missed out, but return a very strong group next year to add on to their success for this, uh, for, for the coming years. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
We'll have the girls come in, Bastrop High School Lady Bear Soccer Team. BHS Lady Bears are led by Coach Leslie Otts, with Ms. Alexia Dyer as the assistant. The girls finished third in District Forty-nine, four A, qualified for the bi-district round of the playoffs. First-team all-district recognition, Sienna Rodriguez, Melissa Perry, and Mariah Ramon, two of which are freshmen, first-team all-district players. Second-team all-district, Megan Pacheco, Madison Gretzner, and Amy Goode. All-district honorable mention, Lindsay Gillespie, Bailey Ray, and Kinsey Adair. And we have the Player of the Year for District Forty-nine, four A, Ms. Cheyenne Rodriguez. Most notable to point out, fifteen, fifteen academic all-district selections on this team, with a minimum GPA of ninety for the year. The BHS Lady Bear Soccer Team, thank you.
Congratulations, ladies.
Like to bring in the powerlifting, uh, BHS Powerlifters? BHS Powerlifters? Don't be fooled by the, by, by the dress, because powerlifting is... Head Coach Jamie McGee, assisted by, uh, Mr. Stuart, Stuart Pearson. The Powerlifters don't compete in any organized district per se, but they do get together from time to time with different schools around the area and in the region, and they meet up on Saturdays to, to, to outlift one another. So, we'd like to recognize the Boys Powerlifters for Bastrop High School, Jaden McGee, Dalton Thomas, Colin Payne, Joe Verity, and a regional qualifier, Brandon Bado. Girls Powerlifters, Michaela Gertz, Tara Alsip, Peyton Seacats, with regional qualifiers, Haley Gertz, who finished second, Daisy Padilla finished third, Chelsea Perry finished sixth, Kiara LaHawn finished eighth, and Tess Dennis and Bridget Farum finished tenth in the region. We had two state qualifiers, uh, in the state of Texas for girls. Haley Gertz finished second in the state, and Daisy Padilla finished fifth. The BHS Powerlifters.
Congratulations. Great job. Coming from a former high school powerlifting coach and regional director.
And now we have the Cedar Creek High School Powerlifting Team. Cedar Creek Powerlifters were led by Head Coach Anthony Lamone, and assisted by Coach Savoy. Regional qualifiers for the Boys, Jeremy Rodriguez, Joseph Rodriguez, and Cody Patterson, and the strongest girl regional qualifier, Ms. Mackenzie Lang for Cedar Creek High School.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach.
Mr. Allen, that's our, our recognition. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murray. At this time, we're gonna move to open forum. I'd like to invite Christian Febrich, uh, up to the mic to take a couple of minutes, and the subject is BISD Librarians.
I'm sure. I am here to, um, first of all, just say, um, thank you to our school board members for all that you've done for our school district, we really appreciate your service. Um, I'd also like to thank our district administration. Um, I know we've worked really hard at trying to, um, serve an entire school district this year with just, um, uh, six librarians, so we are very appreciative of all of the times that you have come to our aid to talk to us, when we were trying to do the best that we possibly can for each and every student in this district. As a member of the Texas Library Association, I would like to invite you to participate in a library awareness campaign sponsored by the American Library Association. The ALA President, Barbara Stripling, has invited all Americans to sign the Declaration for the Right to Libraries. This is a document that affirms that libraries are essential to a democratic society. The Declaration is not a political statement, those who sign this document are not committing to any particular course of action. The purpose of the Declaration is to show our national and local leaders that Americans value their public, school, and academic libraries. I have brought copies of the Declaration for you to review. April is National School Library Month. And in just a very short time, I will try to read just a few of the, um, declarations from the school libraries' Change Lives Initiative. School libraries support literacy and lifelong learning. Many children learn to read at their school libraries via storytimes, research projects, summer reading, tutoring, and other opportunities. Others come to the library to learn the technology and information skills that help them answer their questions, discover new interests, and share their ideas with others. School libraries are the great equalizer. School libraries serve members of the school community of every age, education level, income level, ethnicity, and physical ability. For many, school libraries provide resources that they could not otherwise access, and resources they need to live, learn, and work. School libraries protect our right to know. Our right to read, seek information, and speak freely must not be taken for granted. School libraries and school librarians actively defend this most basic freedom as guaranteed by the First Amendment. School libraries strengthen our nation. The economic health and successful governance of our nation depend on people who are literate and informed. School libraries support this basic right for the next generation of voters and civic activists. School libraries advance research and scholarship. Knowledge grows from knowledge, whether doing a school assignment, seeking personal enrichment, or learning how to share and create information ethically. Scholars of all ages depend on the knowledge and expertise that school libraries and school librarians offer. And lastly, school libraries help us to better understand each other. Students and teachers from all walks of life come together at school libraries to discuss issues of common concern. School libraries provide programs like book clubs and author visits, carefully selected collections, meeting spaces, places to gather with friends and safe havens, to help us share and learn from our differences. And I will leave a copy of the Declaration for each of you, and a paper for you to join us in signing as all Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While those are being distributed, we're gonna move on to the superintendent's report, board discussion. Board discussion.
Sandra.
Thank you for having us once again this year. We had another great year of collections. On behalf of McCree, Veselka, Bragan, and Allen, it's a privilege to work for the school district and have a high degree of success. As I mentioned, the state of your collections are excellent. I'm just going to touch up on a couple of charts that I've handed you in your reports. If you go to page three of the reports, Chart One, it indicates the percent, your total revenue from tax collections as a percentage of your adjusted tax levy. And as you can see at the bottom, for 2012, the school's collections were 101.99%. In '11, it was 102.45. In 2010, it was over 100%, 100.60. Each year, the school district collects over 100% of its tax levy, so that you're able to operate fully. It's a historic number, so that's always, always a great number. Ninety-eight to 99% is good. So, you're well over 100%. As far as delinquent tax collections, if you'll go with me to Page Five, the bottom table, it shows you how much we have collected of each delinquent tax year in a certain period of time. For example, for delinquent tax balance of 2012, we collected 46.53% of it in only nine months of activity, which is very high. And as you can see, in 21 months, 33 months, 45 months, we collect 62, 77, and 83%. Usually, within 50 to 60 months, we collect about 95% of the delinquent taxes for any given year, which is where it usually maxes out. The rest of the report contains our detailed activity, what we do for each tax year, where, what stage of the collections we're at, and your overall delinquent amount. Shows you everything we do. I won't go over it because it's pretty long, but all the information is in front of you. And as I mentioned, your collections are excellent. It comes at no cost to the district. By statute, we work on a contingent fee, and none of it comes out of the school district's funds. As always, it's a privilege to be a small part of what's going on at Bastrop ISD. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
All right. If you have any, you know where to reach us. Thank you.
Thank you, Noe. Appreciate it.
Mr. Allen, we ask Ms. Callahan to come forward and do a quick budget update. And with the Empress Hightown update, we did this the other night, and she's going to mainly go over the slides, the new slides, not information that you've already seen, because we've got a full budget workshop coming up pretty soon.
Good evening. Just to start, a quick update on the calendar. As Mr. Murray said, we have a budget workshop scheduled for May 6. That can be changed, of course, if the board would want to have one quicker. We do have on the calendar slated to adopt the budget May 20, which will require us to post that in the newspaper on May 10. So, that's also a change from what you got last month, so I just wanted to show that again, the tax rate won't be adopted until September. This is new information, as when we spoke last month, we talked mostly about revenues and estimates, and this is just our instructional focus that we're looking at for next year. Just to give you, again, we'll be in more detail at our budget workshop. But as you know, we've had an instructional specialist initiative. This is year three, where we're redirecting service center specialists to the campus level. Of course, you've heard a lot about our creation of our early college high school, just some items, how that'll affect the budget as far as teaching positions and the enrollment that we're going to have. It's a great program, the House Bill 5 compliance, which will include the career portals classes at the middle schools. Those are new requirements with the graduation plans. A bilingual ESL director we've asked for for next year. I wanted to give the information as far as our bilingual and ESL population and show you how that's grown over the past years and know why that's a critical need area for the district in looking forward. And of course, each year, our special ed department does an impact study of all the staffing, and staff are moved around to campuses based on where the students are, and they do a great job of keeping that under tight control. Other budget considerations, you can see, we've asked for intermediate, additional intermediate principal, assistant principals, some tutorial costs, and partner and education costs due to the loss in grant funding. You may know, we will not have our 21st Century Grant for last year, so we'll have to incur some local costs for that. Maintenance and technology staff, licensed vocational nurse for our high schools to split between the two, additional teaching positions for growth, and a couple of teaching assistants, graphing calculators, as that's a new requirement for eighth grade, all eighth graders to have one of those for testing purposes. The only thing different on this slide, the ADA, I still have the budget calculated on the same. I have increased our preliminary property values. Again, I don't receive the certified estimates until April 30. So, by the time we have our next budget workshop, I should have a good estimate of the certified values, though we don't get the actual certified till July. Again, we have right now a debt service tax rate of 42 cents. Not sure where we'll land on that. Hopefully, it'd be great if we could lower that, but we won't know that until we have our values. Other budget assumptions, right now, we have a teacher pay increase of $1,300 in the budget, which is up from $1,000 that we've been able to give the last few years. Our support and auxiliary staff, we have up 6% of the midpoint, and administration a 1.5% of the midpoint, which is what is given typically.
Sandra, I want to really emphasize this. This is a number we feel like we can live with. We are still trying to find a way. 1,500 was the number we would like to land on. If we can do that, if we can find additional dollars to do that, we know it's a very competitive market in the central Texas area to keep the qualified and the very dedicated teachers that we have, and also draw new teachers to our district. So, 1,300 is the number we are minimally going to land on, but we're going to try to push it a little higher. And we appreciate all the work that's been done in that arena.
We are looking at a couple of portable classroom buildings on a lease purchase, some vehicles for the budget. Of course, we always have a transportation CPI increase, and then safety initiatives that you'll see as part of the decision package. This is year two of our decision package, where we asked the board this year to spend about $1 million of fund balance. It doesn't look like we're going to end up spending that much based on our amended budget at this point. But for next year, we have technology again, year two of our safety and security, year two of our gateway transportation sewer system, and then one-time maintenance projects that are needed throughout the district. So, that is indicated in this budget. This is summary of the revenues. The only thing different from last month is just an additional increase in property values based on the higher values that we have. Again, right now, I'm estimating about a 5.5% value increase. The rolls right now showing about eight, but there's still things that have to be adjusted in the rolls, so that's just being conservative. General fund expenditures, right now, based on our revenue and the expenditures of everything you've seen that we've asked for, we have a balanced budget, except if the board approves the one-time fund balance request, that would be the $1 million. So, that, and I have fund balance slides to show you those effects. Right now, at the end of 2013, 2014, our current year, we propose to be at 23.6, or 6.8, 23.8%, I can't see for some reason, of our total fund balance, and 17.6 of undesignated unreserved. This is the two scenarios for 2014, 2015. Without using a fund balance request, we'd be at 23.1 and 17.1 of undesignated unreserved. With the use of the $1 million, 21.4 and 15.5. So, we'd still be above our undesignated unreserved. And again, that's still all preliminary until we get our values. Fund balance, again, our tax rate history, you know that, we try to lower it every time we can. The other funds that the board adopts, debt service, just wouldn't show you where we're at right now with that, showing in excess of $471,000. That's why I think it might be possible that we could drop the tax rate another penny, which would be great, so we'll definitely keep that in mind. And then our food service budget with, of course, is our contract with Chart Wells. And I just wanted you to see those early, so when you have those in front of you to adopt. But I'll be glad to answer any questions, but that's the update for now.
And also, Sandra, just, I'm sorry, David, just let me point out something Sandra started off with on the calendar. We are July 1 budget district. A lot of districts in the state are September 1. We're July 1. In the last two, three years, we have adopted early, and we're suggesting that possible adoption on May 20. That is critical for us, because again, as we're talking about raising the teacher's salary and attracting and keeping teachers, the earlier we can pass our budget and know what we're going to have as far as revenue, the better off we're going to be. So, we would really like to see a good budget workshop situation. If we, as Sandra said, if we need an extra one, we can do that earlier. But we'd like to get that budget adopted in May, if at all possible, so we can retain and then recruit the best staff that we can. Thanks. And David, I'm sorry.
Sandra, one of the things that we had several years ago when we had the cuts, there was multiple positions that were cut.
Right.
And there's a few of those that have come back, and there's some that are missing here.
Right.
So, what are the plan with respect to some of those positions? I think they were, you can help me out. I know librarians was one of them.
Right.
We just heard from Mrs. Febrich.
Librarians, GT, and...
GT. And so, are those positions not...
Those are not in this current budget at this point. We have been working with the librarians. We went with them a couple of weeks ago. We're going to meet with them again on the 21st. And so, we're looking at ideas, and right now, they're not in the budget that's presented.
So, in the workshop, are we going to discuss why or why not?
We can definitely discuss that, and we will have met with the librarians again by that time, so yes.
And then the other thing on the $1 million that was part of the fund balance that was going to be expended, so that, can you explain that to me one more time? Because I'm not sure.
Like the decision package items?
Yes.
Just items that you would ask for to be spent out of fund balance that aren't recurring? So, as you'd never request salaries to be paid out of fund balance because you'd have to continue those.
So, the $1 million that's out there right now?
The what?
The $1 million?
Yes. That's...
What was that for?
Okay.
Was that from last year?
No. It's an additional million this year
Okay.
For the safety initiatives
Okay.
And the year two of those other projects at the, well, the year two was for safety, and then the septic system out at the gateway. And then technology, just to try to keep up with technology. And then the one-time maintenance costs, some items that are needed at the, most of it's Bastrop High School, I think. Is that right? Some of the items that need to be done to gyms, and yes.
Those, okay.
And those are one-time, so they wouldn't be recurring.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Sandra.
Thanks, Sandra. If we got any more questions between now and then, we're going to have a detailed budget workshop where we can detail the questions if we need so.
We would also invite any of the board members to get with us ahead of that workshop and ask any questions they might have as well, and see what we can do about getting any questions answered for you.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. If any board member would like to pull any items off the agenda, we can do that at this time. If not, we need to entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, 3A through F. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. We're going to move on to our action items. Our actions items for A is something that I discussed with administration a little bit, Donald Williams in particular. And I see the opportunity here to nominate our superintendent, based on the Texas Association of School Boards as having a Superintendent of the Year. I want to read this resolution to you, and I'm going to ask for your approval based on several things. But the Bastrop Independent School District Board of Trustees, on this date, April 15, 2014, resolved to nominate Mr. Steve Murray, Superintendent of Schools, for his exemplary vision and leadership toward improving student performance in our schools. This nomination also serves as a symbolic representation of collective work in service of the student-staff community during Mr. Murray's tenure as Superintendent of BISD. That's the resolution. As we know, we've been challenged in this district in the past academically, and we've moved forward from that. Are we there yet? No. I don't know that you ever want to be where you want to be, because you want to continue to raise the bar year after year. But we're headed in a very positive direction. Having said that, I don't think we ought to leave our superintendent out of this nomination. Any district in the state can do this, and I think that ours is duly noted to do that. I'm going to work on the forms, again, it'll be coming from the board with the help of Mr. Williams. So, we can open this up for discussion. If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt this resolution tonight.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution for Texas Association of School Boards Superintendent of the Year, which I will work on the packet, again, with help from administration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I appreciate it coming from the board.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to move to Action Item 4B. Henry Gideon.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Members of the board, you have two items for consideration tonight referencing our child nutrition program. The first is the TDA contract renewal process. This is similar to what we did last year. The documentation that we provided you in your board book is the required documentation that TDA will consider pending your approval of those documents. And the second item we want to take up with you this evening is the raising of meal prices. Again, that is a bit of a federally mandated process for us. You, as a local education agency, can choose to name your price. However, if it falls below the federally mandated guidelines, then we would have to subsidize out of the local budget. Therefore, the child nutrition program typically tries to stay within its own margin of revenue versus expenditure. So, again, for your consideration, I would request approval of the TDA contract process as well as the Amendment Number Two, and also the recommended price increases, which is Item 4C. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we went through that pretty quick.
We'll take Action Item 4B first, and then we'll move to the meal price increase. Henry.
Okay.
We'll entertain a motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the TDA contract renewal in Amendment Number Two for Chart Wells and the provision for food service management for BISD. Is there any discussion? Did we get a second? They decided, I thought I heard a second. I guess I'm hearing things. We'll retract that motion until I get a second.
I'll second.
We got a second now. It's been moved and seconded to approve the TDA contract renewal for the Amendment Number Two for Chart Wells and the provision for food service management for BISD. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Martin is opposed. There are four ayes, so the motion will carry. One nay and four ayes. Now, we'll move to Action Item 4C. Henry, just explain a little bit more about the meal price increase.
Yes, sir. In 2010, when the Obama administration approved the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, along with changes to the nutritional content of our required menus at our schools now, was funding coming from the Fed as well as localized funding that needs to be made up for the increased choices, particularly in the vegetables and fruits and those kinds of things, which causes the meal prices to go up. It's not fully funded, therefore, when it comes through TDA, the funding is not complete in terms of the reimbursement. So, the obligation then is on us to make that up at the cash register, basically. So, on the meal prices, inclusive of some of the adult meal prices, they're recommending that we bump up to that federal mandate. And again, if we don't raise the price, then we have to make up the difference locally with our local tax dollars, as opposed to it all being either reimbursement versus what we generate at the cash register.
Any questions for Henry?
So, can you explain the pricing sheet, which was, it's the proposed price increases for child nutrition program meals? So, we were at $2 for elementary, and it's going to $2.25.
Yes, sir.
And that is, that is from Chart Wells increased costs, or that is the part of the...
It has nothing to... This has to do with the BISD burden. It has nothing to do with Chart Wells' profit margins. It is all-inclusive in our operation expenses. So, the recommendation to go to $2.25 is based on kind of capturing a prorated amount and trying to factor that in and try to spread that pain out a little bit. And that's not going to change. Free and reduced won't be affected. And I might add, regular-priced students are also reimbursed. There's a subsidy on their behalf vis-à-vis the federal commodity processing that we get, as well as portions of their meal is reimbursed. So, it's not totally on the backs of... So it's not totally on the backs of a regular-priced paying kiddo. But about 18 cents is how much we get reimbursed back for a regular-priced lunch from the federal government.
Is that due to the children?
That's what helps us to put out the meals that we produce.
So the child's, what, $0.20 more?
No, no, no. This is the price the children will pay. I apologize. We would get, to help subsidize the fresh fruits and vegetable program, for example, the increase in our food costs, we would get the reimbursement for that to help make up that difference. So this calculation's kind of prorated. It's not very precise, but we tried to take the average block. That spreadsheet you see is a very complicated spreadsheet, but it's the one we follow from the federal government, and that's how we determined and how we landed on those prices. Yeah, most school districts are going to have to adopt these. They're more or less mandated, unless you want to subsidize it locally. And again, with budgets, what budgets are, that's kind of hard for some school districts, of course.
So the ones that are going to actually take the burden for this will be the children who pay for the regular pricing, correct?
Well, again, we're reimbursed fully for free-priced students vis-à-vis federal tax dollars, so all of us that pay into the tax system will pay.
What percentage is that?
It's... Are you asking the percentage of free students? 73% on average. Yeah, 100% subsidized. And then the reduced-priced students pay $0.30 for breakfast, $0.40. That has not changed.
What percentage is that?
Oh, that's, the 73% is inclusive of the total. So it's 20%, 30% reduced, and then the remaining portion would be children who come from those kind of households where the income would require this kind of assistance.
4C.
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 I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 2004 paid lunch equity and federal mandated meal price increase as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Let me see the vote count.
Four.
Four and one against. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to, move on to the information items. If anybody doesn't have anything. April and May are really good board meetings. I'm glad we have high attendance. They're mainly because it's student recognitions on both, both meetings. Student performance, both not only athletically but more important academically. And if you'll notice that when a lot of the principals talked about the performance, academics played a role, so that's going to play a role in all the recognitions that we do. So I want to thank everybody for their efforts and everybody for coming to April. May's going to be an exciting meeting. We're going to bring on two new board members. It's going to be exciting. If you don't mind, would you two stand, please, and just be recognized? Billy Moore. Billy Moore and Molly McClure are going to be joining next May, or not next May, but next month. They'll be swearing in and jumping in the fire with everybody else, and we look forward to your input and your leadership in the district. Thank you, guys. Other than that, unless anybody has anything, we're going to adjourn, and want everybody to have a great Easter. Enjoy your Good Friday off. I know you've all deserved it.
Thank you.
Thank you.